Okay. Last meeting of the decade even, not just the last meeting of the year. Can start off with Board of Selectmen announcements. Want to take that over, Rich?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Tomorrow at the library is the New Year's Eve party for the children. There will be music, dancing, refreshments, make your potty hats, have a photo booth, and desserts and donations will be greatly appreciated. It runs from 11:30 to 1:00. The Senior Center, the council and Asian staff are looking for volunteer kitchen help on Fridays to assist with cleanup after the COA calf. If you're interested, please call the Senior Center at 508-947-7224. Selectmen will be having, one of the selectmen will be having office hours on January 10th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. I'd like to also thank the Police Department for putting on the COA breakfast. It was great. Everybody had a nice time. And also, the chief put a cruiser out to fill up with food for the food pantry and the COA food pantry, right?
Yes.
And they filled it right up. So, thank you, the community for doing that. Senior Center appreciates that. The final master plan implementation committee's public workshop will be held on Saturday, January 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Assawampsett Elementary School. And Town Clerk's reminding that the 2020 dog licenses will be available on January 2nd at the Town Clerk's office. The registration period is January 1st, 2020, to April 30th, 2020. And out of the license of dog owners, we'll need a copy of Valaraby's certificate and certificate of spraying and neutering. Please visit the town website at www.lakefieldma.org for additional information. And I'm sure everybody's happy that they received their tax bills today or yesterday. And the tax bills are due on February 1st.
Okay. Thank you for that. Public input. Does anyone have anything they would like to address with the Board of Selectmen? Anybody?
Sure.
Hi. Could you come to the podium, please?
Sure.
And just state your name.
My name's Tony Kupi. I live at 18 Bond Street, Lakeville. I'm just here as an informational session, but I'd also like to address a couple of things because I know you guys are going to be discussing the fiscal year '21 budget. And I see that, I'm not sure if the Park Commission's discussing a reconstruction of the parking lot for Clear Pond. So, I just wanted to know a little bit more about that. Also, I'm concerned with Clear Pond and that it's not funded in any way by the town and it's basically left alone to kind of fend for itself and raise money for itself. I just don't see it as being a business. And, you know, I'm just wondering maybe some way in the future if we can find some funds that the town has and push them towards that venue because I think it's a venue that a lot of people really like. And I certainly do. My kids love it and it's a great place to go. I think it's one of the nice open spaces that Lakeville has. So, that was one of my talking points. And I thought, there was an update on the list of Lakeville Hospital, but I don't see it on this.
Yeah, it's on the list.
Yeah, it's, yep.
So, we'll be getting to that.
Okay.
Yep, that's pretty much it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, to your, Tony, I had met with the Park Commission at the last meeting and I was going to give an update on what we discussed, including the parking lot and the Clear Pond. So, if you want to wait a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Moving right along. Maureen Candido, our town administrator, has a little report for us.
Yes, by popular demand, it's very low.
Okay.
So, the ADA grant that we applied for back in September came through. We got fully funded for the $35,000 in order to start the analysis on which projects fit the ADA requirements to make some upgrades in the town. So, it's pretty exciting, especially for me personally. It's my first grant with the town, so I did a little happy dance and everything. We're moving towards electronic pay stubs in the town hall. We were still getting paper copies of everything, which is time-consuming and not the best for the environment. So, right now, we started moving towards volunteer pay stubs, and then we will move to everyone gets an electronic pay stub coming up soon. We interviewed four candidates for the Board of Health position, so we're excited that that's moving along. We had some great, some really great candidates come in and we're very pleased that's going well. We wrapped up the budget workshops with the department heads, and now we're working on the capital plan with the department heads, getting all their capital plan items in. And we're going to review them amongst ourselves in the staff meeting, so they're going to be able to vet them against their peers and have a good dialogue prior to them getting to either the Capital Expenditures Committee or right onto the Board of Selectmen. And as far as the Capital Expenditures Committee, two people have been nominated by the moderator, and she's going to submit that to the Board of Selectmen for the next meeting.
Okay. So... All right. Okay. So, at 7:00 p.m., wow, we have a lot to do before that. We do have scheduled to speak with Chief Perkins, the police chief, about some changes, but that's at 7:00, so we have to wait. So, let's try to see what else we can get through before that. I don't know if we want to go to number six folks. Does that work?
Yeah, I request just to put on the agenda. The reason why is because annual town meeting, a special town meeting, comes very quickly around here. And one of the things I want to point out is that the town bylaws say that the annual town meeting is supposed to be held on the second Monday of May, and that hasn't been done for a number of years for some reasons, okay? I think the goal ought to be to try to have the town meeting on time because I think it causes a lot of confusion to people as to you keep moving the dates out. And one of the things that concerns me is that, you know, for the past few years, we haven't provided the information to the townspeople until the day of, you know, the town meeting. And so, I think what we need to do is put together a plan and a schedule of reviewing all the budgets and get everything prepared and coming up with dates that we should be able to meet to make sure the information is available for everybody, Finance Committee, all the department heads, and so forth and so on. So, I'd like the town administrator to do that once she gets a chance, and maybe at our next meeting, we can discuss what those proposals are. The other thing that the town, the town bylaws say is that all warrant articles for the annual town meeting are supposed to be submitted to the Board of Selectmen by the first Monday in March by 4:00 p.m. So, we need to get a letter out to all the committees and all the boards and department heads to inform that, that we will accept warrant articles for the annual town meeting up until May 4th at 4:00 o'clock. We always probably will have a special town meeting anyways, which then can be added additional articles, but at least going into the annual town meeting warrant, you know, we know anything that we need to address. And so, that's the other thing I'd like to see us do. Maureen, if we could, too, please.
I'll have a list for you next week.
Okay.
Okay. I can only speak to last year, but I know I was one of the reasons why we had to delay the meeting. I had something planned that was planned way before I ever pulled papers, so that was partly my fault, so I apologize to the town for that. But, yeah, I too would like to see, you know, at least, I know it's real, I know it's a lot of work for the office, but after town meeting, I had people calling me and saying, "Oh, now that I've had time to sit with the budget," I mean, we can't really give it to people, you know, that far in advance because it's a kind of a fluid thing until we finish. But I would like to see it be available at least on the website, you know, with time for people to take a look at it. So, that would be kind of a good goal.
Madam Chair, if I can?
Yeah.
So, Lorraine and I have worked on that, and we have a budget presentation that's going to be available, that we're going to be able to put out on social media, et cetera, and we're going to be able to plug in those numbers once they're available to us. We also thought it would be helpful to develop kind of a budget glossary of terms and some town meeting.
Yeah.
I don't know, just helpful hints as far as getting through town meeting, getting up and speaking, you know, who can speak, when you can do that. Because I think that is something a lot of people have a lot of, I don't know, anxiety about, as opposed to getting up and, and we hear the same voices over and over on town floor because once you've done it once, you feel comfortable to do it again. But a lot of people don't feel comfortable to do it the first time, and we want to encourage more voices to be heard.
Yeah.
So, we will be doing all those things that you're saying, and we're going to add on and have a presentation that kind of brings people through slide by slide.
What happens?
What happens.
Yeah. That would actually be really, really great. I just know from like my own kids, the first time they went to town meeting, they're like, "Wow, that's really a cool process." But they wouldn't know if they, you know, so I think it would be nice. I do know, though, that we did have, we had brought the preliminary warrant, well, the warrant items to the review, Board of Selectmen review, and that meeting was very well attended, so that was, you know, kind of encouraging that people came out when, you know, they saw the, you know, the actual warrant articles, so to discuss. So, that was pretty, I think that was at the COA. It was just a selectmen's meeting on a Monday night, and there was a lot of people there asking questions, so...
Yeah, and we'll make sure we'll promote it in a way that everyone knows that it's available.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. Anything else, John?
No.
Anything on that?
Nope.
Okay. Do we want to get into, we have 15 minutes, into number seven, you think? Anyone?
Well, once again, I request that's put on the, on the agenda, is that I think we need to, by next meeting, I know that Maureen has gotten out the budget forms to all the department heads and the committees, and that they're supposed to return them by, you know, January 15th.
17th.
Oh, excuse me, 17th.
17th, sorry.
And so, I think at the next meeting, we should talk about, you know, the process that we're going to go through because, you know, the Board of Selectmen, most of the, most of the department heads, you know, report, you know, directly to the Board of Selectmen, and Board of Selectmen have to have the opportunity to review those, you know, budgets before we get them to the Finance Committee. But, I mean, the goal, you know, ought to be, once again, to try to get them to the Finance Committee so they can start the review, you know, the first part of February, you know, February 15th at the latest. And there's, there's no reason why, you know, we shouldn't have revenue numbers, the governor's announcing, you know, his budget on January 22nd, and so we should have the numbers available for the state aid and so forth. And I know that the school department, school committee has already got their preliminary numbers from the enhanced ed reform bill that was passed about a month ago, so they have a good idea. They know what exactly what they are, doesn't mean they, maybe some slight modifications, but they know what it's going to be, so... So, I just want to keep the process moving so we don't get too much down the road and then all of a sudden we're scarring, and try to get things together.
Yeah, the only challenge, oh, Madam Chair, if I can, the only challenge that I see in getting it together is just reminding people that, you know, this is a contract year and that, you know, we have to have contingency plans like one, two, and three when we're talking about any type of payroll.
Well, it was, my discussion with you was that we said to not put any cost of living increases, you know, in the budget.
Yep.
That's being presented by all the departments and boards, and then a later date, you know, once we get to that point, we'd add it, but they would include any step increases that they're entitled to.
Yep. And then, and I think I piggybacked on that and said, "But we should know the impact of those changes, too."
Oh, I agree.
And that's the only thing that I want to make sure that they're all aware of, that if we go with those changes, what that looks like financially.
Okay. So, did you overlap a little bit there on number eight?
Number eight.
Freetown Lakeville FY '21 budget.
No, I wanted the board to know that I met with the, since I'm now the representative for the Regional Finance Committee, that I met with the chairman of the Regional Finance Committee for the Freetown Lakeville District, and we had a very nice conversation about, you know, some of the things that are going on, you know, at the region, and that we talked about budget items and so forth. And I followed up with a meeting with the superintendent and the business manager to get a feel for what's going on for the budget and some preliminary numbers as far as the budget is concerned. And quite frankly, I told him that, you know, I won't even tell you what he was asking for, that there's no way the town can approve that, and we just don't have the funding to do that, so... But, once again, also, they were not going to finalize their budget until April 16th, which is too late as far as I'm concerned, that if we want to get our budgets together by the middle of April, then we need to have the school committee, you know, vote on their budgets and present a budget much earlier than that. They agree, and they're going to readjust that schedule.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Yeah? Number nine, update on performance bond proposal to replace the boilers at Poniquet Regional High School and the intermediate school.
I, once again, I met with the chairman of the Regional Finance Committee along with the superintendent and the business manager to discuss the issues having to do with replacing the boilers at Poniquet High School and the intermediate school. Poniquet High School is got to be 30-plus years old. Intermediate School unfortunately is only about 18 or 20 years old, but they both need to be replaced. So, what they're looking at is a performance bond proposal, and what, basically what that is, is that they ask a company like Train to come in and make a proposal, and it's like a lease payback. And what they do is that the savings that they make on the project will actually offset the costs of the, the bond issue. And so, that has gone on to RFP, and it'll be back sometime in the first part of January, and then it'll be relooked at to determine whether that's the right approach or not.
Okay.
Speaking to that issue is, the, I certainly wouldn't mind that we attempt to do that through some of the green community money, because what Train does and other companies do is the savings that they get, they keep obviously to pay for their capital improvements. And part of the green community is that if we're putting $233,000 into Poniquet this year through the Green Community Grant, Town of Lakeville could continue to do that for the foreseeable future. So, the grant money is state-funded money, and the savings come back to the town. So, if you took, to jump back to Assawampsett, there's a $48,000 savings for the updates that we did, and that comes back, it doesn't come back to the town, it comes back to the school. So, that Train, which is a way to fund the capital, but I'm not so sure we shouldn't fund the capital because your green community grants would somewhat go away because Train and any other company would want to replace the lights, the motors, the controllers, the low handing, the low-hanging fruit. And so, that, I think doing it through the green community grants would be a way to continue with very, less of an impact to the taxpayers possibly. So, I think, Rich, they were doing a, kind of an energy study again for about $25,000 or $35,000. Then that would say what needed to be replaced, that type of thing.
It's already, it's already been done, John.
Well, they did, they did the, the energy grant for saying where the weaknesses were was one thing, but as of a couple of meetings ago, they had not done this complex study that Nate's been involved in. That's, that was about a $35,000 number, and I don't think they had done that. If you're saying they did that, then Nate would be surprised to that because he was involved in that process. So, I'm not so sure that giving it to Train is the right thing to do, so we certainly should look at, is it a better solution to do it through the Energy Committee and/or funding it yourself?
So...
That type of thing.
Yeah, I just have for clarification, so it was the school that decided to go to do the performance bonds?
That's correct.
Yeah. And then, once they get back their RFP, they're, I thought you said they're going to discuss?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Nate's been involved in that, certainly Rich talked to his group, but I certainly talked to the chairman and to Rick Maderas and said, you know, "I'm still of the opinion, as long as it gets done, and what's the best method to do that?" And Nate and I still weren't clear on the best method.
Yeah, just one more comment on that, John. We're not talking about $250,000 here, we're talking about $2 million to replace these boilers in these two schools.
No, I know, I know what he is.
You know, so, I mean, you can't wait. The one, the one definitely at the high school needs to be replaced almost immediately because it's failing so much and so old.
Right. And that money is how much for the high school?
I mean...
How much is the high school one?
I don't, I didn't bring my folder with me, but I want to say it's somewhere in the million-dollar range, but I'm not sure.
I think it's $600,000.
I don't know.
And Lakeville's portion of that would be 360 in theory, so that it could be done through a grant. Could be.
Is it possible?
So, it's something to look at.
Yeah. So, would we be able to meet with them?
Well, I think that's what you need to do between...
Right.
...the school committee and/or Nate Dowling. Nate's been involved in it pretty much from, from day one.
So, we should probably be looking to set up a meeting with the, both Boards of Selectmen and, and the school folks.
Sure. Because if we take a look at what Lakeville did on the energy grant, $233,000 is going into Poniquet. And Freetown not being part of the energy grant group, that they don't have the stretch, they have not adopted, adopted the stretch code, they're kind of getting the free ride. I'm not so sure they shouldn't do a match of the 233.
Right.
And anything to do with any of the other savings that could be done.
I thought...
Because we would be doing a new grant as of March 31st, I think, of this year.
Didn't they start their process?
They are...
They did.
Yeah.
They did start.
They are working towards it.
Working towards it. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, I guess, anything, just wait for the RFPs to come in, and then they're going to try to make a decision, so that would be the time for us to sort of get together with them, I guess, right?
I'll connect, I'll connect with them and try to get a date set.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone? No? What time is it? Do we want to do number 10, or should we...
True. I think we should wait for number 10. It may take longer than five minutes.
Okay. So, how about we just skip down to 17 and 18 and get those out of the way? That's okay with everyone? So, we have a request from number 17. We have a request from Kenneth Upham Sr. for reappointment as constable. The chief has reported no issues with Mr. Upham, so if reappointed, his appointment would expire January 15th, 2021. Dear, this is the letter that he sent in. My appointment as constable for the Town of Lakeville expires January 16th, 2020. I'm respectfully requesting to be reappointed as a constable for the Town of Lakeville for the year 2020 with my appointment effective for the year 2020, my appointment effective January 17th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion for that. Anyone?
So moved. Second.
All in favor of being, reappointing Mr. Upham, Kenneth Upham Sr.? Aye.
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 Okay. And then, we have a request from Harvey Vandal Jr. for reappointment as constable, same thing, pretty much. Chief Perkins has reported no issues. If his appointment would expire, if reappointed, his appointment would expire January 28th, 2021. Please accept this letter as my request to be reappointed as constable in the Town of Lakeville. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Harvey Vandal Jr. as constable.
So moved.
Discussion?
Yes.
Chief, how many constables do we have?
I don't know off the top of my head. Well, all the police officers are constables.
Right.
They get appointed.
So, how many do we really need? I'm not picking on this guy.
Right. Yeah, they do a lot of the private work. We as constables on the police department do postal, posted warrants or something like that.
Okay. When we get a chance, can we find out how many we have, please?
We have five.
Oh, thank you.
And also, David Frey as ACO is a constable as well.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
There is a policy, how many that we have?
Five.
Five. Okay. So, with this, we would still be within the five, correct?
Yes, these two are part of the five.
Okay. Okay. So, motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let's see. Let's go to number 14. I don't think that's... Agenda item number 14, request from the town clerk to appoint election officers. The town clerk has requested that the following residents be appointed as election officers for terms to expire August 15th, 2020. Karen A. Donnelly, Viola M. Fairweather, Robin E. Marks, and Elizabeth Nash. This is submitted by Lily Ann Drain, town clerk and Board of Registars. I'll entertain a motion to appoint these people as election officers.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
The motion should include their expiration date.
Until August 15th, 2020. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Uh... Here we go. One minute. I think we'll wait out the minute. All right, so, agenda item number four, to meet with Police Chief Matthew Perkins to discuss revised job description for administrative assistant, a new job description for a captain's position and salary, and to discuss reducing grade level on the head dispatcher position, and announce police department grants. Take it away, Chief.
Thank you very much. I'll start with the announcement of the grants. Happy to announce that we've been awarded forty thousand dollars from State 911 to defray the cost of salary for dispatches. We're also awarded twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars to defray the cost of 911 telecommunitar training. The state does require a minimum of sixteen hours training per year for 911 certification, and that is covered under that grant. And we also received nine thousand dollars from EOPS to do impaired driving, speeding, distracted driving, and click-in-a-ticket patrols. So I have three items tonight. The first one is the creation of the captain's position and setting a wage. The second one is changing the title from head dispatcher to dispatch supervisor and changing the pay level. And I also have an item dealing with the job description of the police and fire administrative assistant that I've been working on with the fire chiefs, to change the duties and responsibilities to include dispatcher quality assurance and dispatch compensation. Do you want me to start at any certain one, or...
I guess, just wherever, wherever's your fancy, I guess.
All right, I'll, I'll start with the creation of the captain's position. This is something that I've been looking forward to changing the structure of the police department. Currently, we have a structure of two lieutenants serving as like second-in-command positions, operations of public safety, operating a paramilitary-type rank structure, and having two people in that second-in-command position kind of creates problems, and for the proper flow of information, a true second-in-command would be beneficial to the department. Area departments follow a rank structure with a second-in-command, usually it's typically titled deputy police chief or captain. We have never had that position in the town of Lakeville, and I would be looking to implement the position of captain.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Do you want to go over this new structure at all? The organizational chart, I mean, I don't. Does anyone have any questions? I just don't know who knows what or doesn't know what.
I'm okay with it. I mean, I've reviewed it, so...
Okay. Rich, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions on the structure at all.
Okay, on the structure. Job description? Anything, John, on the job description for the captain? Because this is creating a, a whole new position that we've never had in Lakeville before, correct?
Right.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm just gonna ask, so, on page four of what you've given us, it says this position is a non-exempt position as regarding federal and state minimum wage and overtime requirements, and is therefore, and therefore is eligible to be paid at the rate of time in one half, the regular rate of pay for all hours worked beyond forty hours in a week. I'm assuming that's supposed to say week. Is that common?
Yeah.
Not common that the...
Yep, it, it can be, so we're talking exempt and non-exempt positions.
Yeah.
Some departments, the position of captain or deputy chief is exempt, in some departments it's non-exempt. And I looked into this, for the position to work with the structure of our department, it's best to have a non-exempt position, because we do, this is reducing a supervisor, and we do need, still have the need to fill supervisory shifts and overtime. So when I wrote the, the job description, I had, I had to take that in mind as to write it in a non-exempt language, and that language is outlined in Murphy versus the town of Natick, where they have certain, certain job descriptions, that if they're in the job description would be an exemption. One of the exemptions would be that that captain has the authority to hire, fire, promote, demote, and that specifically is not in the job description that I wrote to satisfy that need, because that's in my job description, and that's my duty and responsibility.
So, it would be a salaried position, correct?
Correct.
Not hourly?
Salary, salary, non-exempt, overtime eligible.
Okay. It could just be me, because I'm fairly still new to this whole thing, but how do we figure out what time and a half is on a salary? I'm just...
Right.
And then I, I, I'm curious if the counterpart in the second-in-command in the, in the fire, if there's, just set up the same way for comparison, that's all.
Right. So, we, the second-in-command position at the police department has always been non-exempt and eligible for overtime.
Okay.
The fire department has always been, the deputy chief has been an exempt position and salaried that way. Our needs at the police department are for a non-exempt position, so parity, we've always been different.
Okay. Okay.
It's, it's all based on the wording
Yeah.
from that, from that two thousand and seven case
Yeah.
Murphy versus Nate.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions right now?
I don't have any problems with the job description. I'm, I'm not sure I'm ready to make a decision tonight, though, because I'd like to understand, you know, the chief's budget, you know, first of all, you know, about before we add any position. That's just me.
Yeah.
So, and I, I don't know what salary you're proposing here.
Yeah, so, what, what this new rank structure, structure does is, I actually will have the court officer currently right now is a sergeant. He would come out of court, and that would be backfilled with a patrolman. So that actually frees up a supervisory position, which is fifteen percent over top step patrolman, that's eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars that frees up in the budget. To, to do this restructure, I would be looking at using that money that's in my budget, already funded, to fund the captain's position. So when you have a captain's position, that, that'll go the five thousand dollars, which is outlined in the wage of personnel scale, for, for a lieutenant, it's five thousand dollars above top step patrolman. And then the captain's position would be, if you did three thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars above that of a lieutenant, it doesn't cost any money. It's already funded in the budget.
And what is that for you? How much does a lieutenant get paid?
A lieutenant gets paid five thousand dollars above a top step sergeant, and the sergeant is eight thousand, it's fifteen percent above top step patrolman, which is currently eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
So I think at the, at the end of the day, it's not simply, it's simply giving the, the captain's position a five thousand dollar raise. That's basically what we're doing.
But still...
It would be, yeah, so I'd be looking, anywhere from three thousand, five fifty-six to five thousand.
But your recommendation is fine.
Yeah, that's my recommendation.
But that position would be eligible to work overtime?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
And earn overtime money?
Correct.
Yes.
And is this to be started right away? Is it...
I would, I would like to start it right away. I have it in my budget to start it. I've been kind of looking forward to, you know, restructuring the department since I took over, and it just takes a little time to get things done.
Does anyone else have anything?
No, I mean, it really just comes down to a question.
Yeah.
If you are right on the structure, then you are right on the five thousand dollars, because the comp is simply time and a half, and he makes five thousand dollars more than he does today, so...
Yeah.
That's really, are you, are you ready to vote on that, or do we want to delay it? Because the, the, the chief has outlined what he'd like to do. So if we want to wait till the next meeting, we can wait till the next meeting, but it's a, it's a five thousand dollar delta, plus whatever overtime the current person does, he would probably continue with it, similar overtime.
But this is a new position to each other.
Yeah, it's a new position.
Right, no, 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 I, no, I understand that, right.
Again, I know that they're different, they're not the same, but I know that the deputy is the second command, and he's not eligible for overtime. So I don't know, you know, if there's... I haven't really had a chance to look at his whole, that whole job description and everything, so I just, you know, if, if I'm the only one with this, you know, with this question, then, I mean, I can be prepared to vote if, I can make a decision, but if anyone else has any other questions or they want more information, sounds like John's pretty...
Well, right, I'm not interested in making the positions parity. I mean, the, the fire already had that kind of opportunity. They had entertained, you know, a deputy's job, captain's job, and they had settled in on the, on the deputy's job.
Okay.
So, and, and it's not really parity. Obviously, the deputy does not get overtime. He does get, he does get, whether the comp day or whatever, he does not get overtime.
That's correct. And you give him time off. We're on a strike.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Rich? Anything that you want answered? I would not be upset if I had two more weeks, but if everyone else is, if no one else has questions...
I guess it really, in my mind, would come down to be if we want the chief to work on issues that we want answered.
Yeah.
And we give him two weeks to do that, fine.
Right.
If, if we don't have a list of questions, then I would be voting on it.
Okay, so you have no questions at this time?
No, no, I mean, it really comes down to five thousand dollars.
You indicated that you might like some budget figures.
Well, see, unfortunately, this has nothing to do with the chief. I mean, you know, we just get this information.
Right.
You know, and we haven't, I, I certainly haven't had time to go talk to the chief and ask him specific questions or whatever, and not that I'm against this position, I'm not. I just want to make sure that we do it. Right, that's all, so...
Right, because it's a creation of a whole new position. That's the only reason why I'm hesitating, too. As far as the restructure, you know, I mean, it, it's just a couple of specifics with this actual position, so I wouldn't mind tabling the job description of the police captain till January thirteenth? Is that the next meeting? Yes.
It is, yeah.
To give Rich a chance to talk and to maybe just see some budget numbers, to see those budget numbers. Okay, so, we, we'll table this, do we need to vote to table it?
You can.
Motion to table, anyone? No motion to table? So that means we'll vote? Am I losing you, Rich?
No, you're not losing me, like I just said, you know, I'm just, I'm not against it, I'm just, you know...
Okay.
I mean, I mean, in fairness to the chief, he's put a lot of things in here, talking about saving
Yeah.
money in sergeant's position, and saving money in lieutenant's positions, and, that's all I'm saying, that's all.
Okay, I just want to be sure, because it is the creation of a whole new position, so I just want to be sure that everyone has a chance to, you know, get their questions answered. If no one else wants to table it, then I'll entertain a motion to pass the police captain job description the way that it is.
I'll stick to that motion.
Okay, any further conversation on this? Anyone? All right. So we have motion to approve the creation of a police captain position as reflected here. All those in favor?
Add, add a five thousand dollar suggested increase that the chief has put in his number.
Yes.
I want to pick the amount tonight, too.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'll, so move that motion.
I just have one more question, Chief.
Yep.
I assume that this is a new position?
This is a new position, yep.
And that this will be posted internally?
Yeah, well, before promotions, it'll be posted.
Okay. I'll say.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next, we have, sorry, we can do, I guess, whichever one you want.
Yep, so, the change in the, the title of head dispatcher to dispatch supervisor, and changing it from a level one to a level two position. Currently, the head dispatcher position is always reserved for the most senior dispatcher, that position, that person retired, leaving that a vacancy there. There was never a job description created for that position, and it's actually two pay grades, or two levels above that of dispatcher, which is equivalent, or actually makes more than a, a level or step three patrolman. So it kind of made the hierarchical standards of the police department or the pecking order a little off. So to make that as a supervisor, we bring it down to a level two, add the new created job description for that position.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
Jim?
Yep.
The, the head dispatcher job description was never complete?
I couldn't find one.
Okay, okay, so, so this is what you want in place? We don't need to take a head dispatcher job description and leave that in place for future growth?
Correct.
Because we don't have one?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so this is also a non-exempt position eligible for overtime, correct?
Correct.
I had a question, I forgot what it was. Oh, can you just explain the quality assurance?
Yep.
Portion? Because that's new, correct?
So that's not for the head dispatcher, that's for...
The administrative...
That's the administrative assistant.
Assistant, okay.
Might we create a future position for future growth? If we, if we grow, you might be back sometime later. I'm not saying next year, but we had talked about a different type of position, and I am... And I understand this is what you currently have in front of us.
Yes.
Which I don't object to. But you may come back as things grow and come back, back to a head dispatcher at some point in time or some kind of technical...
Right. I think I'd probably want to stay away from that head dispatcher. It was more whoever the senior most person was got the job. I think dispatch supervisor is the most qualified person for the job.
Perfect. I wrote that down that you won't be back. No, I think it's like the way that it is.
It's just we've talked about so much. I'm just trying to keep it all straight. Rich, any questions on the dispatch supervisor?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to have this dispatch supervisor position... Or whatever. Create this dispatch supervisor position, which is a change from the way that we had it done before.
From level one to level two.
From level one to level two.
I'll second that, that's your motion.
I'll make the motion, so...
Okay. Second, John, second. All those in favor? Any discussion? Anybody? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
And that would, I know that was level two. So the dispatchers on the wage scale have a plus 125 per hour. So I think that would carry over to the, from level one to level two, the plus 125.
Okay. All right. Next.
Next is the changing of the job descriptions of the police and fire administrative assistants. Now they're the only two left on the level one employee. I'd like to change their titles to include dispatch and quality assurance. Since we moved into the new police station and took over dispatch fire, we have taken on additional dispatch duties and additional dispatch power phone protocols. And the power phone protocols that we did before was emergency medical dispatch. Now we're doing fire dispatch and law. I was always in charge. I was the one who did quality assurance when we were at the old station. And quality assurance is a requirement to be able to be eligible for the state 911 grant reimbursement money. I always did that. I was reimbursed doing that through overtime. The grant no longer will fund or reimburse overtime for quality assurance. They want it done on straight time. So that kind of leaves me with who's going to do it now type of a thing. I think by allowing the two administrative assistants to do this, who train them up as dispatches, they'd be certified as dispatches, would train them up to do quality assurance, they'd be certified to do quality assurance. They would come in, they would do monthly reviews of all the 911 calls. The fire department would do half the emergency medical dispatch and all of the fire dispatch. The police administrative assistant will do half the emergency medical dispatch and all the law dispatch. What they'll do is they'll fill out a form. It's already a power phone form, drop-down boxes. Did they ask this question? Did they ask this question? Did they dispatch, did the dispatcher dispatch that call to the appropriate unit? Did they follow the appropriate recommendations and priorities? It gives them a score at the end. And then the score, if it's anything less than 100, it shows areas for improvement. Those scores will be emailed to myself, the fire chief, and to the call taker. And that way, we can identify areas of improvement, areas in need of change. And I think allowing the fire administrative assistant to do this, it keeps the fire department involved in the decision-making of police and fire dispatch. Gives them a seat at the table. I think the way we're setting this up now from the start, we want to set it up so our replacements who come after us, there's not going to be a power struggle. That's my employee. I tell them what's a priority and what's not a priority. It's power phone that does it. It's the policies that we're going to put in place that are going to do it.
Okay. Chief, do you have anything to say?
No. I, when the chief, Chief Perkins showed the outline of the program to me, I was pretty enthusiastic about it. One of the more common defenses for a fire chief to dispatch outside of his agencies is that he hasn't, doesn't have any input or conduit to control the quality of the work that's being done. And this answers that concern right there. I'm pretty excited about it.
Okay. Now, on funding, there is funding for a full dispatcher position currently, correct?
Correct. That's unfilled, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Okay. So that's where some of this, because it's not going to be, these are extra job responsibilities and...
Correct. And some of the other areas that I've identified to pull funding from is to lapse the certification of supervisors in quality assurance. That was something that I did. That was all supervisors, sergeants, and lieutenants would be certified on 911. It costs money to recertify every year for the training and for the supervisors who have never answered a 911 call in years. But it's always there as a just-in-case.
Yeah.
The way we're set up here in the new police station, there's really not, it's not a need to have the supervisors other than if that supervisor was going to do quality assurance to keep them training. So if those get lapsed, train up the two administrative assistants, it covers all the...
Covers some of the funding from there. Okay. Okay. Questions? Anyone? John?
The, what we're really doing here is that we would be giving the two administrative assistants, the fire and the police administrative assistants, a $1.25 an hour increase once they get certified. So I would ask the chief, both chiefs, that both people have, not on an as-need basis, but a specific schedule where they come down here weekly. Whether it be a four-hour basis, whether it be an eight-hour basis. I'm not going to get into that. I'll say this, I want it to be a minimum of four hours for each. Because if you get thrown into the pan that's already on fire if you've not been here, if Nick is the, we'll call it the dispatch supervisor, then these administrative assistants should be doing the job under his supervision. So they're not going to come up when the fire is already lit and say, let's do 911. So they're going to get compensated once they get certified. But I'd ask that they actually have a set schedule that I leave to both chiefs to do.
We can work that out.
The more the better. But I would want a minimum of four hours each.
And that's, when someone says four hours a week, they keep the skills and the things that they learned fresh. And you've got to put it in practice because when you don't use it, then the skills diminish and we're not giving a good quality service to the public or call.
Well, have them come in on a Friday night when the phones are lit up.
And so also, those two people would be available during the day? Let's say there's a large-scale event or whatever and dispatch needs assistance?
Correct. So that's Monday through Friday? And I've thought about that. They could rotate when there is a need and there is a, you know, a fire, a major car accident, or a large-scale event and their dispatcher needs coverage. Monday through Friday, they can either call Kristen up or they can call the administrative assistant from the fire department down. And they can rotate. Okay, I had the last one. It's your turn, you're up now. And they can, they can be ready and to jump in when needed.
Okay. And then they could also be on call anytime or...
So when, that's what I'm going to try to, try to do is increase the part-time, part-time calls. So when we are busy, off-hours at night, I want the dispatches and the supervisors to say, we need another hand in here. Can we get somebody in here for a couple hours to assist? That's my ultimate goal to do, to implement something like that. It would be, and the way we do it, part-timers have preference over the call-ins so as to, you know, to create or to save any type of an overtime. If it was, part-timers couldn't come in, then an administrative assistant off-duty could come in and we could, we're going to have to work something out as far as overtime. He's paying, I'm paying, is it comp or how it's done? But right now, it's, the preference and the priority goes to part-timers.
Okay. I just want to say that this is new for all of us. New station.
Yep.
Joining the, you know, combining the dispatch. And I, for one, really do appreciate both your efforts, you know, and trying to, you know, just make this, you know, a pretty easy transition. I know that there's still a little double, you know, but I'm really looking forward to, the process so far has been, from what I can see, really good. So I do appreciate both of your efforts at working together, you know, to make it happen. So, Rich, anything?
No, I'm all set.
All set? Anything else?
Right. But it only becomes effective after they get certified. So if we're approving this, we'd come up with some kind of a date or you'll have to come back to us.
They can, they can, once they get certified, they'll have certificates. And then we'll submit the certificates to payroll.
Then that will kick it on. This doesn't happen next week, they have to get certified.
Yeah, it is, it's some of it.
That's what I want.
Yeah.
To happen and have that schedule that we can say, when is the net, when is coming?
So, just for the sake of clarity, we're only going to do the one right now, even though you mentioned the other one. We're just... So I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised police administrative assistant job description.
So moved. I'll second that.
Any other conversation?
Madam Chair, do you want to include after the certification in...
After the certification. Got that, Trish? To that this go into effect after the administrative assistants are certified? Administrative assistants certified? Okay. All those in favor?
Right.
Aye. Okay. That's it, right?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Lot of work. Appreciate your efforts. Agenda item number five. Fire Chief Michael O'Brien, please. Take it away.
So I'd like to piggybacking onto Chief Perkins' change in job description for the administrative assistant with the net. This, as I said before, this is kind of my conduit to the dispatch. This is my, my way of having some kind of control over, over the services being provided to the fire department. And the one thing, the only wrinkle to this is, I don't have the funding mechanism to take care of this. So it might be, I haven't really been able to, I don't know if that's changed to like one, put it into the next fiscal year's budget or what the remedy is to that. But it's something that I would have to, I would have to investigate, move forward.
But the chief agreed to pay for...
Yeah, I didn't know if that was...
That chief. He'll pay for it this year.
All right. All right. I didn't know if that was clear, if that was, I didn't want to, I didn't want to speak for him. I didn't know if he...
Yeah. Because you worked it out with that unfilled dispatch full-time, because that's a full-time dispatch position, the one that's unfilled, correct? Yeah. So...
The, and it's, just to add a comment, that the dispatch has been, it's gone better than I expected. We really, you know, I kind of prepped everybody to have patience and deal with the mistakes and deal with the bumps in the road. And there've been very, very few. And the reactions have been almost 100% positive. So it's, a lot of work went into it from, you know, lieutenants and police officers and it's just, I'm very, very happy with it.
Okay. All right. Madam Chair?
Yes?
Could I just ask, are you covering both administrative assistants?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure I have it right. Okay.
The differential for training and the...
And the additional... Okay. Thank you.
I have to bring them out to lunch.
Okay.
That's not on the budget. The $5,000 bucks is.
Somewhere close.
Okay. So is there any other questions? John? Maureen? No?
No, not for the dispatch.
Rich?
No, I think so.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the revised job description for the fire department administrative assistant.
So moved. I'm sorry. Did he say so moved?
Yeah, he said so moved. Yeah, okay. Any other conversation?
Yeah, I have one question to the chief. Says here, 40-hour work week, depending upon various circumstances, start and finish times may vary. Why wouldn't it be consistent every day?
As far as her normal duties? Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah.
Okay. We have different things that come up. We have a lot of obligations as far as data exports, things like that. So there are instances where she has to work late to finish her work.
But wouldn't that cover her overtime? She works more than eight hours a day?
Yeah, she's comp... I guess I didn't understand the question. Yeah, she is compensated overtime. She, she works...
Okay. My question is, is that this says, normally it says, you know, the working hours of what the employee's going to work. Eight hours a week. Eight to four, I don't know what it is. Depending upon what it is. So why would you have various start and finish times for a regular employee that works 40 hours a week? If that employee works over eight hours a day, that employee's supposed to get overtime anyways, right? So I don't understand that stick.
I think they're just trying to be flexible. I assume. I can, I can amend it if you prefer to have a...
I guess I would ask the town administrator that, you know, we're trying to be consistent here with employees' hours and working certain hours. Wouldn't you want this to be consistent too?
I think we can make that change pretty quickly. Do we want to make a change here to reflect the same?
Yeah, we might as well.
And then we'll go forward and make sure that any job descriptions have that listed? This one's from 2016?
Yeah. I just don't, this has nothing to do with the chief, once again.
Sure.
But I don't think we should have various start times and end times for employees, especially in town hall. You know, if we have scheduled hours and somebody comes in and wants to talk to the chief and the chief's not there and so forth and so on, so...
The only times I see that, and I do see something here about occasionally asked night meetings, they'll do comp time, so they'll start later during the day and they'll work at night for the meetings.
Yeah, well, that's another issue we need to talk about, comp time.
Yeah, but that's what I see that for.
I don't want to get into that tonight. But federal regulations don't allow comp time, so...
Okay. So we are going to amend this to say, to remove start and finish times may vary?
Well, I don't know what the other ones say. They say regularly scheduled 40-hour work week.
It'll either say that or it'll say eight to four, Monday through Friday. It'll have an actual time on a lot of them.
I don't know what the job descrip, the other job description says.
Yep. I think we have the other one right here.
No, but I mean, a regular employee, the other employee.
Would you like me to check it?
I don't want to get too technical about it, but I just think that I'd like to see consistency. That's all.
We can approve the motion just with changes as we discussed.
Yeah.
Which we know what they...
Right, right in that area.
Okay, we'll put it in consistency.
Yes.
That's fine.
So we have a motion and a second, correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Madam Chair, can I get some clarification?
Yes.
If I change that, we'll have to go before the board, all those changes, correct? For every job description that I change that on?
Yes.
Well, why don't we, let's take a look at it first. Let's not try to make this too complicated.
Let's find the wording. Yeah. Let's find the wording and talk about the wording before we go changing them all and have to approve them all. And if we're going to be making changes like that, there's definitely other changes to be made too. So, okay. And now the grants.
What I'm asking for tonight is authorization to apply for three federal grants for the fire department. And the reason I'm asking for authorization is because if we're awarded those... And the reason I'm asking for authorization is because if we were awarded those grants, there comes along a match. The first one is Assistance to Firefighters Grant for a vehicle. That class of, that subs classification of the Assistance to Firefighter Grant is out there. And I think it's kind of a, it's a very competitive grant, meaning it's, the probability of success is a little bit lower, but it's a shot we should take. We have some older vehicles in the fleet that have to be replaced someday and if we have an opportunity to replace it with only a 5% match, I think we should go for it. The second one is the Equipment Grant, which is a, another subdivision of the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. And essentially this is kind of a, it's a competitive grant, but it's, the probability of success is much higher. We have a lot of equipment, shots of hose, nozzles, axes, things like that, that given their age are considered antiquated or obsolete. And basically create a laundry list of the equipment that we want to replace and we put into a grant and send it to the federal government. They approve the grant. So this is kind of a, what, you know, as close to a layup as we have. And that also has a 5% grant, should be around $1,000. And then the last one is a little more complicated. It's the Safer Grant. So the Safer Grant is a, a grant that helps defray the cost of hiring new firefighters. It is, do you have the, the matches laid out before you? So I don't have to get into it too much. But basically it's a three-year program with the two years being the same, the first two years, and it's the salary and benefits. And it's designed to just defray the cost. And how the grant is awarded is, we attempt, we attempt to comply with the federal standard. And so I would, I would narrate this grant, or I would write this grant, saying that I want to comply with OSHA's two-in, two-out rule. Which means that if I put two people into a fire, a hazardous atmosphere or a fire, I need two people on the outside prepared to rescue them. And so that's, that's what I'd be attempting to accomplish by hiring firefighters. So hiring two firefighters would mean that we had three firefighters on duty 24/7. If you look at our comparables, we're, you know, around the state, we're, we're behind as far as our staffing goes. And the reason we're behind is because we have a successful call department. And I get that there's a benefit there to taxpayers by maintaining a successful call department. And I would never want to, I would never want to do anything to disrupt that program. But I think that moving from two to three is reasonable and we'd still be at, have a level of workload where we'd have an engaged call department, where they'd be making the trips back and forth and they'd be active. So I think it's a reasonable number to, to, to try and obtain that three all the time. You know, it's, it's quite a bit of savings to the town over three years. At the end of three years, we're not obligated to keep the position. Obviously, I would hope you, you would want to for safety reasons, but we're not obligated to. And I think it's, it's something that's, it's a manageable grant to write. I can narrate a justification. This is a very, very competitive grant. There are very, not many of these grants given out, but it's, it's worth a shot. All these grants, the awards would come in next fiscal year. So it's kind of a difficult budgetary thing to do to set aside the matches for grants that you don't know you've gotten. But if we get them and we don't have money to meet that match, it would be terrible to be in a position where I'd have to refuse these grants because that, that definitely, that's, if you ever refuse one of these grants, it's entered into your scoring, how they score the grants going into the future. You're pretty much never going to get another federal grant. So that's kind of why I'm here tonight. So I'm not put in a position where I've applied for a grant that I can never, I can't get. That would be horrible for like them. So have any questions about any of the individual grants or how they're written or who will be writing them?
I have a problem with the first two grants, but I have a problem with the third one. What worries me is that, you know, you're going to try to get, you know, two firefighters and you know, and then you're three, you're going to have to come up with 150 to 175,000 dollars to find and fund those firefighters. I just don't, at this point, without understanding the budget ramifications as to where we are and where we're going, I'm not sure it's a good idea to fund this grant, especially if we get in a position where we have to reject it.
Yeah.
That's the only, that's the concern that I have.
So when you say who's going to be writing the grant, I assumed it would be you. Should I not be assuming that?
Actually, the Safer Grant and the Vehicle Grant, I would be writing that. The Equipment Grant, it would be Lieutenant Sylvia. We have two, two grant writers and between the two of us, we have a, we both have 100% success rate writing these grants. We haven't been denied yet, so we'd probably, probably collaborate on all three and I would probably be signing the B and C.
Okay.
On the grant, Madam Chair, on the grant, the breaker, could we do a ladder truck instead of, you're just picking, did you pick the breaker because that's part of what's in the grant program? Or do we pick our oldest vehicle?
The, the grant program, how they score it is, if I have a vehicle that's not NFPA compliant, which the ladder truck is NFPA compliant right now.
Okay.
The brush truck isn't, so my odds of success go to the roof. And so that's trying to get something that, get something of value for.
You're not just picking that because it's the oldest. You're picking it because?
It's not an NFPA compliant vehicle.
Okay.
Right, right. And it's, so I certainly would agree with the first two. The third, I, I also would agree. We had approved this back, I believe, in 2017 as a potential. I would not hire these firefighters unless this grant was awarded. So I'm in the general position of whether it be fire, police, or town employees of no new hires. But when I see that someone will be a 25, 75% match, I would do it. I would do it because the ambulance revenues, not that I want to pre-spend it, that certainly when we started, it was about a $400,000 number. And it could be an $800,000 number as we move forward. So I'd look at it as a way that they're paying for us to get these people trained. And certainly the paramedic situation falls into this, that we want to hire paramedics. And I would hope that if on the overtime basis, we have $100,000 for callback, that it would somewhat reduce that also.
It definitely changes the way we do business.
Right, right. So it would change it a little bit because you wouldn't necessarily have to do a callback if you had an extra firefighter or paramedic available to stay in, potentially stay in the station. So I would, I would support C if you want to. When do you have to apply for this?
It's, it's basically, you send a random announcement out. You have no idea when the, when the grant opens up. It's supposed to be, it was supposed to be the beginning of December and they still haven't opened it up. So it could be tomorrow. I doubt it's tomorrow, but it could be next week and we don't know. We just have to be ready to write it and we have done our homework.
So I mean, we can wait if the selectmen would until you get that request and we could talk about it at the very next meeting as to whether you do the effort to do it. And I had suggested not just to you, but to anyone grant writing, that if there's any expertise from the outside, via Serpette or anyone that has the right words that increase our chance of getting grants, I'm all for that. Because we were not successful in getting this Safer Grant in the past. And I'm not saying it's because of writing the grant. There's plenty of other departments that need two firefighters too.
It's so weird, they're scored through a computer. And so if you know how it's scored, you can get to peer review. And peer review is really important that you know that this firefighter is sitting down reading your grants. So you, you write it to them. And sometimes when you use a grant writer, they don't know how to speak to a firefighter. And I think that's kind of where I've had my success is writing it to a firefighter.
Oh, all right. I'm just insinuating if there's anyone that we can use as assistants, be my guest.
I'm kind of caught in a weird position here where I have, you know, a lineage of reasons to justify the third, the third person, but it's kind of like a, it's almost like an agenda item for another day because it's such a can of worms and it, it goes back to how we do business and, and we're almost, we almost designed our, our staffing around, around how certain people respond back to the station. And, and to be reliant on a single person or a small group of people to staff, to have your staffing in certain ways, it's a, it's a tough position to be in. It's, it's when you're dealing with public safety.
But I do have to say that you've done a good job of building a bigger qualified department.
Yeah.
So I think that's certainly a plus and maybe that's where we get our people from. So I would, I would be supportive of C because I look at the overtime that we currently pay. And I look at the revenues from the ambulance fee. And I'm not saying pour them into this. But the third year, our third year is the big question. Was it a good decision, a bad decision? And if that decision is, it was a bad decision, we let people go, so be it. But we have enough turnover that we don't have to worry about whether we let them go. They might be good replacements for the people that we have.
That's true.
Okay.
I would support C for those variety of reasons.
So I'd like to take them individually. So I will entertain a motion to authorize the first one, Grant Assistance to the Firefighters Federal Grant Vehicle for a breaker.
So moved. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. With me Tracy? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay. The second one, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the Assistance to Firefighters Federal Grant for Equipment. Okay, entertain that motion to authorize Assistance to Firefighters Federal Grant for Equipment.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As for the third one, I would like to table it to see some budget numbers till January 13th. I know that's.
I don't think we're in a budget numbers by then.
Well, just to even look at some numbers of any kind because I don't want to commit to something and then, you know, say, you know, and, you know, just.
It's an extensive application period too. So if, if, if we wanted to meet in February, they haven't even opened the grant process up. I don't know when it's going to open. So I don't think February would be a problem.
Okay.
And, and I would welcome the opportunity to meet with, with you individually as well and I could pull over anything that you wanted to go over too.
Yeah, you know, just any other kind of information because, you know, I mean, John makes all valid points, but the worst thing I would have to do is in, you know, after year three is tell people, oh, sorry, you know, you know, it was great having you here, but, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to have to get into a situation like that. But, so just probably table the third, table the third one for more information. All right, anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Agenda item number 10, Discuss Meeting with the Park Commission Regarding FY '21 Budget and Reconstruction of Parking Lots.
Tony, so I don't have to talk through this box over here. Why don't you move over here? And I see Jesse is here from the Park Commission as well. Do you want to go over here too, Jesse?
Madam Chair? Yes. Mr. Hui, how do you say your last name?
C-H-I-U-E-R.
Thank you.
I actually asked to be put on the agenda. I had gone to the Park Commission's meeting and, you know, I know they were talking about, you know, their budget and so forth and some issues, you know, that they're dealing with and I was there to listen. And then we got into some discussion about, you know, three or four items that have, I think were interested in the Park Commission besides myself. So a couple of things that, you know, were discussed, the three main things that, you know, were discussed. One having to do with Clear Pond is that I wanted to talk to the commission about maybe the opportunity of the town providing some funding to keep the Clear Pond to town residents only. And so what came out of the meeting was, and actually we had a follow-up meeting with the chairman of the Park Commission having to do with their budget. And so what we came out of that meeting was that to look at what the actual costs are because there were some costs in the other part of the budget. And so we wanted to get a handle on, you know, what those costs were. And then the other thing was to get clarification on the revenues that were coming and breaking out the revenues from residents and non-residents and so forth and so on. So we had a preliminary discussion, you know, about that and basically a rough number that the town would have to come up with funding would be roughly about $20,000. And so when we get into the budget process, I want to discuss it with the selectmen and the finance committee as to something we may do. And the reason why it's brought up and the Park Commission, I believe, feels the same way, I'm not trying to put words into you about Jesse, that, you know, there's a lot of stress on the staff there, you know, because it's always crowded. The parking lot, you know, was a problem. The Clear Pond is being overused, which is causing maintenance problems and so forth. So I think we're all on the same page about trying to address that issue. So Tony, I just wanted you to know that, that we will, at least I will be bringing it up as part of the discussion. I don't know how the board feels right now because this is the first time I talked to a park.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
So, so the $20,000, that's their operating budget right now and that's what they're being open to everybody?
Correct. No, the budget, the budget, I think it's $52,000 Jesse, I think the number.
Yeah, it's over $50,000.
Yeah, it's about $52,000. And the revenue that's coming in from a combination of the residents and the non-residents.
So it's about 30, too?
Yeah, it's about 30, no.
So it's in deficit for 20,000?
No, it's not in deficit. It's just that in order for us to just keep it for town residents, we would have to subsidize that budget to do that.
But, so in discussion with that though, obviously if we reduce it to residents only, the operating budget is going to decrease.
Not the town, well, puts, puts money into it to support it. See, there's no, there's no tax revenue that's supporting the Clear Pond right now.
Right.
And what we're proposing, at least what I'm proposing, is to look at those options to see if we can come up with additional revenue from the town side.
Yeah, I guess I would just like to see, you know, the cost line by line, why it's costing $50,000 a year.
Sure, we're going to ask for that. They're working on that now. I know that the chairman Scott is, is going to be putting that together. I think he's given us a preliminary budget, but he said he needed to look at some charges that were in the wrong place or whatever.
And all I'm saying too is the more people we allow, obviously the more that it costs. Because you have more trash, you have more parking, you have.
We agree.
You just, more to take care of.
Yeah, parking is a serious problem.
This isn't a large pump.
No, I agree.
This has got to be one of the smallest, you know, used cars.
I mean, I, I think it was, maybe Jesse, you can help here, but I think it was opened up to out-of-town residents to help increase revenue?
Sure. To, to help keep it close to breaking even.
To help keep it close to breaking even. Okay.
Anyway, so with the Park Commission, we're going to be, Scott's going to bring it back to the Park Commission and they're going to, we're going to discuss it further during the month of January. Okay, so that's one issue. So would you limit it just to Clear Pond or would you say that soccer should only have Lakeville people, so on and so forth? I mean, is the attempt just to exclude anyone from any other town? No, we're just talking about Clear Pond, John. Why wouldn't you talk about the others then? Well, I think that's a lot more complicated to eliminate. Because a lot of times, help me Jesse, you know, you know better than I do, but a lot of these groups are tri-town, you know, towns that are into soccer programs or whatever they happen to be. So to just say you've got to limit it to Lakeville, first of all, I don't think they'd be able to support some of those programs without some outside.
I don't think there's as much, you know, negative impact from bringing in more people into the sports that more people is needed. We don't want the town to come in and try to. We don't want, you know, the town to come in and try to subsidize for not having people out of town playing sports. Whereas where the, the pond, you know, there has been a lot of complaint about people from out of town using it. A lot of people want it to just be Lakeville residents only. So, we've always said, well, we can't do that because there isn't enough money to support that. And that's where this has come as a possibility of...
You can also increase the out-of-town fees if you're looking to reduce. You certainly can reduce, potentially if you go up in the fees, those that want to pay the higher fee may continue to come. So, you might even have a greater revenue with fewer people. I don't know.
The fees are the same.
But you do want to play with that number.
The membership, so for a membership, if you're a Lakeville resident, it's less than a membership if you're an out-of-town?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, right. So, you could increase the out-of-towners, which would potentially reduce the, the attendees or they might pay a lot more money. They've done a better job of collecting receipts once they begin to move the table over and collect the receipts rather than have people walk through. So, with the addition of Doug Barry...
These are things that have been discussed too, as other options.
That's got a lot better.
This is just a new option that just came to us in the last couple of weeks.
Right, right.
Possibly having other sorts of...
So, I, I kind of never like having to come up with more money, increase the revenues. If they choose to go away, that's one thing. You'll find out after you increase it.
Well, so then I guess, is there a capacity that Clear Pond can handle? I mean, are we just saying everybody in the state can come if they want to?
I guess I'd want Doug Barry to come here and answer that. He's the professional. I go there all the time.
Yeah.
And, and I'll have to say the out-of-towners, if you will, are generally in, the, the third of it further down. That doesn't always happen, but that's the way that is. So, I don't know what the capacity is. Someone say we're at capacity? I'm not so sure we are. I'd want Doug Barry here.
Well, I think it's a complicated issue too. Environmentally, I, I know Doug does a great job down there, but I don't know that Doug's an environmental scientist and can say, geez, this, this amount of people in the water affects the water quality.
Well, isn't that what we're saying already? That it's over capacity? I thought I heard someone say that tonight.
Well, I, no, I'm saying, what is, what is the capacity? I'm not an environmental scientist.
So, if you want to find that, I'll find that out first.
Yeah.
They do test the quality of bacteria.
So, this is just a discussion that has come up with the parks department and I know selectmen with camera had gone to a meeting. Do you have any other questions, like specific questions? I know there was something in here about reconstruction of the parking lot.
Oh, we had to talk about that. I was just talking about Clear Pond.
Okay. All right. So, are you okay with all the other?
Well, I guess, I, I've had a discussion with Doug about, about the amount of trash. Obviously, if more people, it means more trash.
Yeah.
How are things getting recycled? Just trying to keep it a clean, fun place.
Yeah. No, I, I understand.
In general, I mean, to me, you know, having to, to use it and operate it as a business, when you have it, this monetary factor, sometimes the environment gets exploited because we need to meet a dollar value. And that's...
Yeah.
That's where my concern is really. And that's kind of the way it is right now. We're saying it needs to have this much money, that's why we need to have tons of people come here and pay for it. That's why I'm here at the board meeting, because I think it's relevant to, if so many people in the town really like this, then maybe it's found, would we put some money towards it from the town?
Okay. Well, um, I guess my suggestion would be to continue to follow it through, you know, the parks department meetings. I don't know what is the next step that the parks department has.
I'd do that. And they said, come, come speak to the board about, you know, your personal concerns.
Okay. We are noted. Do we want to schedule a joint meeting with the parks to discuss this or do we want to elect someone from the board to... Well, I'm technically the parks representative right now. I don't think we changed that, correct?
I guess maybe we could also make two of town residents, but what do they think? I mean, if they, if everybody in the town says, geez, would we want to have it open to everybody in the state? Well, then I guess I'll be of both.
Right. I honestly, I honestly think a lot of people don't realize that the parks is its own enterprise, so to speak.
I don't think they do.
Yeah. And, and that it is, you know, responsible for generating revenue for itself. So, I, I'm not quite sure, you know, we can recognize the concerns and as a board, we would have to make a decision too, whether we would want to try to do that. So, um, I think this is very early, but I do appreciate you coming in and expressing your concerns, because if we don't know how people feel, then, you know...
Yeah, just to be clear John, I, I'm not totally against it being open to the pump. I do like the idea of having different fees because people that live here, I think, have a little bit more right to enjoy it.
Absolutely.
Just like any private beach, I go to beaches all the time where they say, residents only. I mean, you go down to Marion, any of these, these towns, it's residents only.
Yeah.
One thing we don't want to lose is the, the former residents that come back to the beach. We definitely...
Lots of middleborough people that come here that grew up in the neighborhood. But aside from that, if we have a, if we have an environmental concern, I'm all on board for that. But that's, right now, that, that's the park. So, if that's a valid concern, we should make sure that they're testing the water quality for, for bacteria, that type of stuff. So, I mean, that, that is done. So, if we have rubbish concerns, if we have environmental concerns, those should be addressed.
Even, you know, parking.
And then the common sense of it should say, how many Lakeville people go, how many people buy family, how many do daily? I've been going there for years. I still pay the price, but I didn't know that seniors get in for nothing. So, I usually just donate the money. But they don't have to get in for nothing either.
Do we, do we know why, I thought in the past, if, if you were not a resident, you could go with a resident and pay a fee to get in? Do you know Jesse if that's correct or not?
I'm not sure. There's, there's a gate fee.
Yeah, there's a gate fee. If you're out, if you're out of town...
Bring a buddy.
Bring a buddy. If that person was from out of town, let's say. I, I'm just curious, you know, if money was the only reason why it changed or if there were other reasons too. So, I, I mean, I do think that we owe it to ourselves to have these conversations. So, um, you know, one of us will certainly, um, will start participating, I guess, and just try to figure out what some of those answers are and see what, you know, the parks does come up with for budget numbers and gives us for, you know, to look at. But again, I do appreciate you coming in because if people don't come in and tell us how they feel, you know, then we don't know. So, um, okay. So, the other thing was...
The other thing that we talked about at the park commission, having to do with the, the parking lots over at Ted Williams Camp, those parking lots need to be addressed. And so, what we talked about was, was to, we look at the design that was originally put together, I don't know how long ago, but it was a while ago, and to, we look at that and meet with the superintendent of, highway superintendent to talk to, to look at the options with the park commission, to come up with some numbers. We can't leave those parking lots the way they are. They're just too dangerous for people. I mean, the, the park commission has got weddings there and events and so forth and so on, and it's just bad. It's really bad. And so, one of the goals that came out of that meeting was, was to look at that and once again, we talked to Scott about it when we met with him about the budget, that we'll meet with Franklin and look at what those options are.
Now, those, those numbers are available. But that has been quoted, both the karate studio was quoted separately and the soccer field of the police station was quoted separately. Give you the numbers that we had hired someone, a sole proprietor, to do the, the soccer field parking lot for under $10,000 and we provide the material. So, it was a cost of above $15,000. That was rejected by the parks. We then had to go out because they rejected it, said, oh no, that's not proper bidding. When Elton quoted it and the average price was well in excess of $100,000 just for the soccer field. We had it being done for less than $15,000. So, I say to the people that rejected it, they should go find someone to do it for $15,000.
So, I think we need to...
It's back to them. I'm not paying $100,000 for something that they rejected a $15,000 quota on.
But John...
And they know that.
Okay. I don't know who it was on the park commission.
Well, you shouldn't either.
I don't know who it was that rejected it.
You're there all the time. You don't know?
What'd you say?
Jesse, who was it?
I wasn't there that night.
What?
I wasn't there that night.
Oh, you don't know who, you don't know who it was?
No, I don't.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
No one wants to speak to it. Go right ahead.
Well, anyways, we've got a problem over there.
Right.
You do, you do. It needs to be addressed. Not only is it a problem with the parking, but we have a liability problem.
Absolutely. I'm not denying any of that. That's the park. The park needs to find someone to fix the soccer one for $15,000.
That's not going to happen, John.
Why not?
Right. Well, you know, I mean, we have...
They can put together their construction people buddies and get it done.
Okay. So, moving forward...
Okay. Anyways, we're going to be setting up a meeting, you know, with Franklin, at least I am, you know, with the town administrator and Scott, and then go back to the park commission to, you know, discuss, you know, what the options are because we can't...
Those numbers are available. Have you seen them?
No, I haven't, John.
Well, I'm surprised the park didn't give them to you if you were there talking about it. They have those numbers.
But they didn't have the numbers with them that night. Well, I mean, you know, we're talking about issues and problems and trying to fix it.
It is, absolutely fix it. Fix it for $15,000.
It's not going to happen, John.
Why not?
It won't.
Why not?
I believe the $15,000...
You didn't get Billy Logan and those kind of people down there to do it.
The, the $15,000 option, I don't believe is on the table anymore. And if we have to use proper channels, it's going to commit more money. We all know that, so, um, we...
The proper channels were done. Sole providers.
I'm not saying, right.
Well, you're saying proper channels.
I'm not saying they weren't. No, I'm just saying going forward, we'll follow whatever proper channel we have to follow. I mean, we'll have the, you know, town administrator work with the parks department and, I, I mean, that's, that's our option right now.
Certainly the building commissioner was involved in it since day one, both processes.
Was it a study done by Zenith for the drainage?
I hope. It's not even a big deal to fix it.
The drainage?
Yeah, there was a study in that, but...
Okay. I'm just want to try to look for it.
Okay. So, the point is, we know that there's a problem there and we need to find a solution that, that we can all live with. And, you know, Maureen, maybe we should be planning a meeting with, a joint meeting with the parks department sooner than later. Okay? So, we will maybe get that, give some time for them to work on a few things and maybe the first week in February, we can meet with them and really put in, in actual plan of action, not just a, we should, maybe we could, maybe we will, but actually put in a plan when the stuff is going to get done. So...
Okay. The third, the third thing that, that we talked about was that their, their maintenance person is retiring March 1st, isn't it, March 31st, I think? Somewhere in that. And so, what we wanted to try to do was look at a way to try to make sure that we have that position.
Who, who is this?
Vickery, Mike Vickery.
So, is this on our agenda?
I'm just giving you an update.
No, this is an update on what happened at the meeting.
Well, the update, the update was for reconstruction of the parking lot and the budget.
Okay. Well, we won't talk about it then.
We won't talk about that.
We'll talk about it next meeting.
Okay. If we could put a note...
I try to listen to people, John.
Right. And let's put a note for the next meeting so that we can talk about that as a board of selectmen, so that way we have some kind of a decision before we sit down and meet with the parks department.
The park is an enterprise account and you're our designee.
Right.
And you should, if, if you have those, it's an enterprise account.
Yes, it is.
And they run their own show, which I'm not objecting to. They run their own show.
They do run their own show.
They should come up, they should come up with their budget, their process and present it to the town folks.
Yes. Okay.
And you're our designee.
Yes, I am the designee. Okay. Number...
Just so you know, it says, discuss meeting with park commission regarding the 21 budget, which had to do with the staffing issues over there.
Well, then certainly outline them.
That's okay. If you don't want to talk about it, that's fine. We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, you're the agenda person that says, I want it on the agenda. Well, just be specific.
I can put anything I want on the agenda.
Just be specific.
John, if there's something you want on the agenda...
Be specific.
I am specific.
Sure.
Okay.
I put on there, I had a meeting with the park commission and to discuss some issues with the park commission. And you don't want an update on that? I do. It's obvious that the park commission is concerned about some of these issues.
Certainly I am too, and they should be fixed. And the park needs to come up with that plan. They need to come up with a plan.
It's something we need to...
They're elected people.
So...
It's something we need to work on together. Because as I told the park commission, and Jesse can peer me out, I came here to listen, I came here to communicate with the park commission to try to get good communications between the, the park commission and the board of selectmen.
So, why, why do we have Leah as the appointee of the parks commission and you go and shouldn't she be going?
I wouldn't go to the meeting, sure, if I want.
He can go anywhere he wants, John.
Sure you can.
And, and you know what?
I'm going to continue doing that, like I did when I went with the, I went to the planning board as well.
If that's the problem right now, I would be willing to give, to give up the committee. But you know what? Let's just try to stick to what we're doing here, okay?
Can I just say?
Yes.
One thing. Transparency wise, for, for the people of the town, I, I don't think that many people realize how this works at all. And it's very confusing for them. I mean, you can see the debate that we're having right, right now over budget and enterprise. Now, I'm just, you know, I, I live in the town, I have kids, I want to enjoy the parks. But I really think that the more clear and simple it is for people to understand, then they won't be so afraid to come voice their opinion. Okay? And now, that just goes for not just what we're talking about with the parks, but with everything that we talk about here. If it's not simple and clear and laid out for people, they just get scared away, you know? If they feel like they're going to come down and people are going to like bite off their head and, and not know what's going on, they don't want to be a part of it. head and not know what's going on, they don't wanna be a part of it. And I really do want people to be a part of it, because I really do feel like a lot of people in this town like this small town community. And I mean, that's what I hear from people day in and day out, that they like the parks, they like being able to go for walks on trails and keep it clean and keep the waters clean. I think that's very important to people. I'm way off base.
And, no, you're right. And I agree with you. I do agree with you that I don't think people realize that, you know, the park is its own enterprise, and it is responsible for raising its own revenue. So that does make it unique, and there isn't, you know, a whole lot of tax money or even any that goes into supporting it. And I don't think a lot of people realize that.
No, I know.
Again, another, you know, reason to get the budget out to folks earlier, as early as we can, with putting out an accurate budget, is so that people have some time to take a look at it before town meeting. I mean, sometimes you walk into town meeting and you pick it up and you look at it, and you're like, geez, how am I supposed to digest this whole thing before, you know? Because that's what town meeting is supposed to be for, for people to come and ask questions. So you're right, and I'm glad you're here tonight, because for every person that comes and asks a question, there's a whole bunch of people that are willing to listen to the answer, so...
And certainly for this issue about the parking lot, that sounds like it's a pretty big issue. So, you know, to have that nice and highly lighted for people, that this is an issue, I know a lot of people come here and a lot of people use it. We really wanna make it nice and clear for people. And then to say, you know, "We don't really know the solution right now." I mean, it sounds like it's gonna cost a lot of money. Maybe we can open an up to a discussion with the townspeople, so...
Right.
Maybe somebody has some great ideas on how to fix it.
Right, and you know what? To be perfectly honest, there was a person that was willing to fix it, and I don't know exactly why the parks didn't want it or what the whole situation was, but that option is no longer available from everything I've been told. So it's like we have to go forward and find a different, you know, in the same respect, the folks on the parks commission, they're elected, so we can advise and whatever, but we can't tell them what to do either. So that's why you need to get all these people in the same room willing to work together. And that always hasn't been the way in the past. But, you know, some of us are trying.
Is it commonplace for these two committees, how often do they meet together?
The board of selectmen and the...
The board and the parks commission.
Budget season?
They do not. Just the budget.
Just the budget season.
And people should, I encourage people to go to the parks commission and certainly voice your concerns. And certainly, the parking lots are unacceptable.
So they only meet that one time?
That's all. That's all.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. That's just, I guess, it's hard when people operate in their own world, 9.9% of the time, and then...
Right. And I mean, I can see why, you know, they referred you to come here, because the only other place where the parks can get, you know, money would be from the town budget, from the board of selectmen, basically. So I can see why they referred you here. But, you know, that's a bigger question, you know, whether we can just, we have a whole budget to put on, and that is an enterprise fund. So, you know, it's a bigger question than just the three of us saying, "Yeah, let's give them 50 grand." I mean, that not, isn't necessarily the right thing to do.
Yeah, and maybe there's grants out there. I don't really know, but, you know, that's the largely makes the circle of the discussion for people in the town. They might have some connections where, we just don't know. And money could come from somewhere, and, oh, we get it done. That'd be awesome.
But don't let them off the hook, continue to go to the meetings, and certainly voice your concern.
Right.
And coming here isn't the end of the world, but they're an enterprise account, they run their own show, and certainly the taxpayers have to listen to them, but we can go through and say, "Listen, we put $190,000 into the lodge, we put $175,000 into the, we, the town came up with those numbers to do the driveway."
So when did it shift?
We had to do those.
When did it shift to an enterprise account?
Oh, years ago.
It has been for years, but that was money that the town came up with to subsidize that part.
Because they had shortfalls. Well, they needed it done. They had shortfalls on fixing the lodge. But that discussion, they should have that discussion on the parking lots, an open discussion as to what went wrong and how they're gonna make it right.
Okay. So I'd like to move on if we possibly can. I do appreciate you coming tonight, Tony, though, so, and all, you know, great questions, and just the fact that you're interested is refreshing for us, so... Okay, moving on. Agenda item number 11. Discuss meeting with the planning board concerning island terrace condominium project and the marijuana moratorium. That also is rich.
Does anybody wanna talk about that, or you want to... Anyone wanna look at the meeting on that tape?
I do know that. I watched you, and I know that you went to the parks department, so, I mean, to the planning board. And I basically saw that you gave them an update on the extension, but if you'd like to fill in the gaps, please do.
Well, I just wanted to make sure the planning board was aware that the marijuana moratorium had expired, but we are protected because they have a zoning bylaw pending, and the moratorium will stay in effect until the zoning bylaw is presented to town meeting. It needs to be approved by town meeting, which right now would probably be in the main timeframe, whatever it is. And I had asked them if they wanted to hold a special town meeting for the marijuana bylaw, and they said that it wasn't, it's not necessary, it's not necessary, they don't wanna do that. The only thing that they would have to do is that the public hearing for the initial bylaw will expire, or may has already expired, so they have to hold another public hearing for that particular bylaw, and they said they would schedule, you know, to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Number 12 is discuss the appointment of the board of selectmen represented for the master plan implementation committee. So I know Tracy has provided us with a list of folks who are on the master plan right now. I did have one question on this. Are all these members that are on this committee right now, are they all attending? Do they all have good attendance?
I could speak to that?
Yes.
Please. I've been there six months, but I have not seen Fred Beals. Beals, right?
Yes, Beals.
Yes, Beals, yes. So, and I believe he's scheduled to be there through July?
Okay.
Tracy, is that correct? July?
Yes, July 31st.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
According to the charge that was put in place in 2006, and amended in 2015, and amended again in 2017, the committee consists of seven members appointed by the board of selectmen for one-year term. The committee shall consist of a member of the planning board, the town administrator, a member of the open space committee, and a member of the conservation commission, and three members of law. And so the current town administrator needs to be appointed to the master plan implementation committee to replace Rita Garbit, who is retired.
Okay. I... Seven members of the selectmen, okay. Do we know the attendance on everybody else on there?
It looks pretty regular. I don't see a lot of empty seats at the table.
Okay, but you do attend?
I do attend. I have attended everyone since May or June, and, yeah.
Okay, and then there's the last meeting coming up, is that correct?
So that's the last big meeting, and that's the open meeting for the thing, but there should be another meeting in February to wrap it up, because they, if you recall, they needed an extension. It was supposed to be the beginning of December, that was the end of it all, but it actually needed an extension because we couldn't fit all the events in the compressed timeframe.
Okay. I do know that the previous board, we voted to allow Rita Garbit to stay the designee of the selectman because she had, you know, put in so much time, and it was work that's important to her. So I'm wondering if there's a way that, you know, she could be made an at-large member. We have someone who doesn't have attendance, regular attendance, but you're going regularly anyway, so it's almost like you're still fulfilling that position even though you don't have the title of. So, I mean, I really do think that it needs to be cleaned up per the way the rules are. So I'll entertain a motion to appoint Maureen Candido as the selectman's designee.
It's a move.
Not as the chair, but as a member of the board of selectmen. I will second that. So all those in favor?
So, discussion is...
Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion.
Is why are we taking Rita off, who was there, because, one, she had probably more town knowledge than anyone else on the board, and she was, wanted to wrap it up, and certainly wrap it up in the January, February period. And so why would we make a change with two months to go in the process? Why do we wanna take a person that has town knowledge more than anyone and take them off the board?
Because there's rules?
There are designees. It was voted by the previous select group, but she was the designee. She was, she was the town administrator, and we said, "Well, it's almost done. Why don't we let her wrap it up? There's another meeting or two." And it would've been done, except the extensions came forward. Why would we take someone off the board that has that experience at this point in time? Two more important meetings to go.
She has every right to attend the meeting.
Sure she does.
The town administrator is gonna be responsible to be, to implement all of these suggestions that are coming out of this implementation committee.
Right.
And according to what was, what the committee was, implementation committee is made of, specifically says, "The town administrator," not the town administrator's designate, the town administrator. We have a new town administrator. The new town administrator should be involved and should participate and have a vote at this meeting.
She's gonna attend the meeting.
But she technically doesn't have the vote.
So I guess we're throwing off someone that has been on this for a long, long time.
She could still participate in it, Josh.
Sure. I think it's some kind of retribution. I don't get it.
Uh...
Why would you say something like that?
Why? Because we wanna, like, follow the rules.
Why? Leave it at this.
And you know what?
Leave it at this.
You know, I...
You think I have, against Rita?
I don't know. Why vote her off?
I mean...
Did you ask her? Did she, did she wanna get off the committee?
I didn't ask her.
I do remember...
Oh, why wouldn't you ask her? She's on the committee.
Why should I ask her?
Oh, all right.
It's right here.
John, I do remember that day, okay? And Maureen, I would never expect Maureen to say, "No, I don't do that because I do mind," but, I mean, technically, Maureen's a town administrator now, so...
No, I can read that.
You know, you know?
Okay.
Brian?
Is the person without attendance an at-large member?
The person without attendance is an at-large member.
Would you consider rescinding their appointment and appointing Rita in that position?
That's where I'm going next, but, you know, I, you know, I just would really like... I won't say that. Anyways, so, is there any other discussion? Okay, so, all those in favor of changing the committee to reflect Maureen Candido as the town administrator, which is a position that is supposed to be on the board? All those in favor of that change?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Me.
Okay, so two to one. John is opposed. I would like to, I do know this other person serves on a different committee, and also on that committee, I believe, his attendance. So, you know, I'm not quite sure, you know, if there's an issue or whatever. And sometimes it's hard for people to, you know, to resign from committees, especially if they've been a vital part of them in the past. But that's our job, unfortunately, to do stuff sometimes that, you know, doesn't make everybody happy. But I would like to see if there's, anyone wants to make a motion to, you know, rescind the membership of Mr. Beal, who is considered a member at large. I will sign the letter if it passes, and call him myself, to have him off as, to have his member rescinded.
I'll make that motion, as long as the second motion will be to reappoint Rita Garbit to the committee.
Um...
Two unrelated items, but I'll agree to throw Fred off.
So you're agreeing with making that motion?
Sure.
Any second from Rich? Okay. I'm gonna make the second as a selectman, not as the chair. All those in favor of...
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
I think we ought to Fred to contact in first before you remove him from the board and find out if he has or he hasn't attended any meetings. We don't know that.
Okay. We don't know that. Madam Chair? Yep.
The selectmen do have an attendance policy regarding appointed, and typically, what happens is, there's a six-month attendance, which I will be sending out, and then based on the attendance, then they would make decisions on if a membership be removed or stay on.
Yes.
Just as an FYI.
And I, you know, I am involved, was involved, because I do belong to that other, I'm the representative for that other committee, and I know that there was an issue with communication also. So I don't know if that's actually possible, Rich, but, um, well, so we have a motion and a second. All of those in favor of...
Removing Fred.
Removing Fred.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, two to one. Okay. So I will, as, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Rita Garbit as a member at large.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I will, as a selectman, second that. Any conversation?
As you said, I have nothing against Rita. I know that John thinks that, but I...
But she's back on the committee, so I don't have a problem. So I'm all set.
Oh, John.
I'm sorry. She's not back on the committee yet. She hasn't moved in yet.
Right, not yet.
No, getting close.
Okay.
I just, you know, I'm against it because I think we gotta give Fred the opportunity to find out if he's still interested, if he's not, and if he resigns.
Right, so that, the past, Fred is no longer on the committee.
Right. Okay, so all those in favor of appointing Rita Garbit as the member at large? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, so, two and one abstention. That was quite difficult.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
What is, what is her role with the master plan committee?
Well, she was the previous town administrator, so she had the position, the one position is reserved for town administrator. The town administrator actually belongs to many committees in town, because they're the integral person that, you know, so...
So the master plan committee is going to make recommendations?
On the future, right.
And then the town administrator is going to see that they come, what, in front of all the boards?
Well, whatever, to, yeah, to keep us all up to date and make sure that, you know, we try to implement all these things that this group of people has been working together all this time.
What obligation does that, do we have to implement the things that the committee recommends? Yes?
There's suggestions, and there's suggestions based on what, the input of what the town has been for all these meetings, and...
So they just basically took all the townspeople's information?
They synthesize it, they come up with a plan.
They have public meetings.
Yeah, and something that makes sense for the town.
I've had to look at one more, but I just wasn't sure, like, that's a committee that we're paying Fred there?
Do we, did you say we get paid?
No, there's the town...
I was like, wait!
The town is paying for this?
No.
You did pay, you did pay a lot for the master plan.
Yeah, for the master plan.
And that was voted, it was a lot of money.
For them to make recommendations on what we do?
Well, to hire a serpent and put together these various presentations, they were the ones we were paying.
But, other than...
I'm sorry.
Two parts. Oh, no, I was saying, there's two parts. There's the planning phase, which is wrapping up right now.
Right.
Sorry, my voice is bad. The planning phase is just wrapping up, and then after the planning phase is done, it would be the actual implementation phase, which the group would still be meeting for, but there would actually be a timeline of things where we would present and say, you know, "We would like this action," or "The master plan recommends this action," and it would come before the boards that are relevant to the action in the town.
Um, but the...
But it doesn't come with any funding or, nothing, you're saying, "You should do this, but you can find my part?" Yeah, okay.
That's very, and very oversimplified.
Well, I get it.
And I think you paid $60,000 for that.
Yeah.
Back to my point, though, like, if it's really complex for people, like, the simpler it is for people, the more... it is for people, the more they're going to get involved.
The state somewhat mandates a housing production plan and things like that. So part of it is, part of it comes out of that.
Madam Chair? Additionally, the newspaper just did a story on the master plan, and it's in the current edition of it, is that, for people, for people that are interested in reading up on it and what some of the aims and goals are.
Okay.
Okay. Agenda item number 13. Discuss update on the interest in the former Lakeville Hospital property. So, I don't know if, uh, well, there's interest in the old Lakeville Hospital property. Go ahead, Rich.
The board designated me to be involved in looking at the auction, along with the town administrator and Nate Darling, to try to figure out, you know, some of the things that are going on there. And we had asked the owner of the property to come in and meet with the board of selectmen a couple of months ago now, and he doesn't want to do that. And then he said, okay, well, we'll meet individually with one of the selectmen, and I was designated to meet with him, and still hasn't, still has refused to meet with the town. So, as, as things happen out there in the, around town, you know, rumors going around, you know, of what's going to happen with the Lakeville Hospital and what's going on there, and just so we can make sure that there's not a lot of confusion, that there was somebody that called that was some interest in looking at the former Lakeville Hospital, but it is way, way premature, you know, at this point, to even discuss, you know, what the options are. So, that's where the update is. I would hope that we'd get in touch with Eric again and ask him to come in and meet with the board, so we kind of know what's going on, because there's a lot of planning that needs to be done, having to do with the former property. Everything from signaling at Bridge Street is being looked at, and traffic and stuff like that. And if we don't know what's going on, we can't plan for any of that stuff. So, that's where we are.
Can we just have a quick synopsis of, I know that some property was sold, looks like a funeral home's going in?
Well, that's kind of what we're...
There is a funeral home under construction, yes.
Yeah. And, I mean, I, you know...
While all the property was not sold, it's still property remaining.
Yes.
Right. And in all fairness to the owner of the property, I can see why he wouldn't want to come to a public meeting. I mean, you know, if something changes, then, you know, how social media, he said he was going to do this, and now, you know, I mean, you know, but I still would like it if he would come and at least talk to someone, the town administrator and one of the selectmen.
Madam Chair, he did say after the holidays that he would get together because holiday plans.
Sure. So maybe if we could keep on that, that would be great. Give us some idea which direction to go for planning purposes. Okay. So, number 15. Class three license for Shonik Auto Body, 35 Bedford Street. Shonik Auto Body has submitted their renewal, so their conditions are as follows: not more than 40 unregistered vehicles to be on the property at any one time, only whole vehicles to be exposed to view, and all disassembly be, to be within building or stockade fence. So I will entertain a motion to approve the renewal of a class three license for Shonik Auto Body to expire January 1st, 2021.
So, second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number 16 is the request for two common vicula licenses. The first is for K&amp;L Incorporated doing business at Saga Sushi at 9 Harding Street, and the second is for J&amp;J Seafood at 197 County Street. I'll entertain a motion to approve the renewal of these common vicula licenses for both of these establishments, sherm to expire December 31st, 2020.
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item number 19, Mark Walters from Sun Multi-Sports for the Patriot Half Triathlon has offered a donation of $1,500 to the town. So, we need to make a vote to decide where that money should go. My question is, can it be split, or does it all have to go to one place? It can be split. Does anyone have any suggestion on the board where we would like to see that money go?
I had suggested Decker at the school earlier. If you can come up with any others, if you want.
Okay. Anything, any ideas, Rich?
I think we ought to break it up into three different ones, you know, three $500 ones. Since last year, we only got $500, and this year we're getting $1,500.
Yeah. Who was it last year?
It was the Lakeville Historical Society.
Okay.
I, I, I would like to see $500 be donated to the senior center to help provide some aids to seniors that really need help.
Okay. Maureen, do you have any suggestions where, do you see a need somewhere?
Well, I mean, we did, we have talked a lot about the parks, and this is coming from the parks, so maybe this could be something that, for Clear Pond Park, something we can get structured.
He just specifically said he wanted the money, some of it, to the parks.
Yeah, so I would think that we, we could do the last $500 for the parks.
Okay. General, or do we want to earmark it general for the parks, or specifically for Clear Pond? I'm okay with the general and the parks. Jesse, I'm sure you guys can figure out what your need is.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to, uh, for the $1,500 donation from Sun Multi-Sports to be distributed $500 as follows: $500 to Decka at the high school, $500 to the senior center, and $500 to the parks department.
So move. Second.
Any other conversation on that? I would just like to say that I do appreciate, you know, Mark Walters making that $1,500 donation, and I, you know, I definitely like to see the kids and seniors, and I think that's a pretty nice way of, and I had nothing to do with selecting those, so I commend everybody else. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, we are at new business. So, I will, I, I'll go first. Under new business, I know, um, so, there's a committee called ZEBRAC, zoning by law review committee. Now, I replaced Aaron Burke on the board, and Aaron stayed on as the selectmen's representative after he was done through, I think it was June, because they had done some work again not to, you know, stop things in midstream, zoning changes that were brought to town meeting. So since that time, I had been appointed to fill that position, and in the last three or four months, maybe, I've spoken to different members of that committee. I've heard everything from, we need it, we don't need it, we should dissolve it, we shouldn't dissolve it, there's still work to be done. So, I would just like to know from my selectmen, from the board, from the other two members, if there is any con... I've also tried to get a meeting on the books, and I haven't been successful with getting anyone to date a meeting. Because now with the change going on, we need to appoint a chair and whatever, and I, you know, I've talked to different members, so I've been unsuccessful at determining whether this is something we need going forward. I've also been unsuccessful at trying to get a meeting on the calendar. So, and I've, you know, spoken with different members. So, if either one of the board of selectmen right now, sitting on either side, are, have any comment about ZEBRAC and whether I should continue to try to, to get this committee going, or if it's something that, if we want to discuss in the future, next month, whatever, what the reasons were we created this committee, and if those reasons still apply, because I just hate having committees out there that aren't really doing anything, and no one seems to be chomping at the bit to me. So, if they actually have a purpose, I'd like to know what it is. I'd like to get a chair appointed. So I'm looking for opinions, thoughts, from my fellow board of selectmen. Anything? Okay. Well, then I will continue to try to get a meeting with these people that say we do need it and we don't need it. Maybe we can decide.
Well, I'd like to, I guess the, the minimum is I'd like to see what the charge of the committee is, number one. Number two, what's the makeup of the committee?
Right. And I would like to get all that information, but I just can't seem to get anyone to agree to a date to actually, you know, book.
No, but who's appointed to the committee now?
Appointed to the committee right now would be one of the, one selectman, the building inspector, one planning board member, one board of health member, one member of the assessors, I believe, and I'm not sure who else. Tracy, would you know who else is on that committee?
I can get it.
Is Bob Mather on there, I think?
Yeah, Bob Mather is. I don't know if he's like an at-large.
Right.
Yeah. So, I've, you know, I've talked with Nate Darling, I've talked with John Oliveri, I've talked with Pete Conroy.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
If I can squeak up here. We do have the recalcification process about to start, too, and we're, we're kind of going to be duplicating efforts of some of the things that ZEBRAC is charged with. I don't have the charter in front of me.
Yep.
The charge in front of me. But we are looking at not only general bylaws, but zoning bylaws, and we're doing it in a comprehensive way. And we also have Nate Darling and a member of the planning board, and myself, and, and the town clerk in that group. It almost seems redundant at that point, but, you know, just to throw that out there.
Right. And that's why I was trying to get all these people together for a meeting to actually discuss all that stuff, and I just can't seem to get...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The membership is yourself, Peter Conroy from the planning board, Nate Darling, John LeBlanc, Robert Mather, John Oliveri Jr., and Robert Palucci.
I mean, you know, again, if we have that group doing all that work anyway, so, you know, I just can't seem to get anyone to try to, you know, get together. So do we need this group? I don't know. I know they did some work on zoning and whatever, but, so, if no one else is interested in discussing it as a select board, then I will just continue my own efforts at trying to figure out what we're doing with that committee.
Right. I mean, it was originally founded to try to clear up the language on some of the zoning and to make the Main Street 105 fairly consistent, the depth of that. They were then going to look at other issues that is suggested, cluster zoning articles. The planning board can be working on that. Some of it was to relieve the burden from the planning board. But if they cleaned up enough of the ambiguous languages on, on some of the zoning, then maybe they've served their term, but they, they should, I, I don't know why we can't get them all together, or at least most of them together, to say, should they continue.
Yeah. And, and you know, one thing is, you know, Nate Darling, again, is on this committee, and he is a super busy guy, and I hate to have him, you know, committed to this and have another meeting on his agenda once every two or three months, whenever it was that they were meeting, if he's already meeting with, you know, these other...
Which we're essentially doing...
Right.
The same.
Right. He is a very busy person, and I hate to see him duplicating his efforts just for the sake of having a committee. So I guess I'm just making it public now that I'd like to figure out, and I will make one last ditch effort to get everyone together to determine whether we need that committee going forward, or if it's just a duplicate at this point.
Right.
Okay. Does, um, I'm not quite sure if it's new business or old business, but we have received three letters for the finance committee opening, so most likely we will be addressing that at the next meeting in January. Three letters?
Three.
Three. Okay. And I, again, I'm not sure if this is old business or new business, but I know that there's been several meetings about the renovation of the selectmen's office area. Everything else looks great. Everything else is coming, has come out really nice. I think it's a very, you know, town person, user office space. You know, Rita had done a lot of work there, and everything came out really nice, so I'm just curious as to, I know, Maureen, part of your office is complete. I think you're waiting for some, you know...
Small one.
Yeah. So maybe, I, I don't know if there's any update from anybody, because I don't know a thing about, you know, and I would like to.
So, update from me. Last I checked with Nate, it's going to be about a couple months, and then we're going to start working on the area where the selectmen's office, where the selectmen's going to have their table, and where Lorraine will be sharing space, and where Tracy will be sharing space with a floater or, or Devaney.
Okay.
So about three months, and what that renovation will consist of, it would be the same as kind of mine, just minimizing, taking the old stuff out.
Yep.
Ripping up the old carpet and putting down, I forgot what the makeup of the tiles is, but it's the same tiles that are in the school, the same tiles we put downstairs.
Because the flooring, I do know the flooring was completed in the hallway.
Yep, we did the hallway.
Okay. So it's a two to three month timeframe?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, you know, tentatively like all construction projects. But yes, it's going to be about taking stuff out, minimizing it. I believe with the exception of two file cabinets, we have all the actual, two file cabinets and a small table. We have actual, all the actual furniture that will be in place there. So it will really be about taking up the old ceiling tile, maybe putting in some lighting fixtures, but paint and spackle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else new business? Do you have any new business, Maureen?
Not today.
Okay. John? Any new business? Rich?
All set, thanks.
Okay. Um, old business.
I just wanted to provide the board the minutes of the town meeting, this past town meeting, and to clarify a statement that John made having to do with the overlay reserve, that the overlay reserve was not used for the article of $978,000, but was used within the town budget for wages and expenses, so you can take a look at that when you get a chance.
Okay.
I did look at it. So, when we use the overlay money, which we agreed to use the money on April 18, 2018 at the selectmen's meeting, we specifically said that we're going to use the money, $225,000 in the overlay district for the OPEB liabilities. So that's on the April 18, 2018 meeting. And certainly before we did that, we confided in the board of assessors, we confided in town accountant, and we confided in Harald Rock and Todd, told them exactly what we were doing. So, you can, you can do that, but we had voted to you not put money in there and use the $225 to fund OPEB.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
But if you look at the 2020 budget, there was no funding for the OPEB in the budget.
Right.
And put the money...
Right.
Excuse me. The money was used for other parts of the budget for wages and expenses. So you took $225,000 that was originally used the previous year and is now used within the operating budget itself.
No.
I don't know what numbers you're looking at, John. But the other problem, the other problem that we have is that you use $183,000 in free cash, you know, to balance the budget, which means for fiscal '21's budget, we're going to have to use at least a minimum of $183,000 in free cash in order to go forward to keep with sustaining the revenue. Right?
Well, maybe we can get the $500,000 back that you did on town floor that came out of the reserve for the school. And we specifically put money into the account.
Isn't that correct, John, though? You need $183,000 going forward for free cash in order to balance 2021's?
So we have a million one in free cash.
No, but you used one time revenue. Right? Didn't you?
We put it in there on a previous money.
You didn't use free cash the previous year to balance the budget, but this year you did. Right?
I don't know.
Well, you got it right in front of you.
Well, I didn't, I didn't go specifically on that, Rich. I thought you were still going on the overlay reserve. So I came with how we voted it on the April 18 meeting.
Okay.
I can talk the other one.
The other part of, thank you, the other part of old business is the reorganization. I believe the town clerk has asked us if some of these positions are going to be filled. So we said, the moderator has brought forward a couple of positions for the capital expenditures committee, is that correct?
Correct. And now to make up the rest, it's myself.
Yep.
As in my role of.
Town administrator, yep.
A designee from the Board of Selectmen and one from the funds.
Okay. So can we work on putting that together?
Sure.
Those names as soon as she, maybe yours could be ready to go for us to just choose whoever we want that night, unless someone wants to choose that right now.
If anyone has any.
Names? Does anyone have any names? Does anyone want to put their name in to be the selectman's designee on the capital expenditures committee? Or we can wait and see, maybe we'll do it all at one night? Okay. Now, the economic development committee, do we have?
That committee hasn't met in a couple of years.
Again?
There's no reason to have that committee anymore. They're all, they're all resigned.
2017.
There's not even minutes of that meeting.
Okay, so again, I mean, this might be a nice time going forward to try to clean up some of these, you know, committees. So how about we put, getting a bunch of information together and putting that on a future agenda so we can determine whether we need it, don't need it. Project review committee for 43.
That's new.
D. Okay, that's new. So that's a committee that we need to put together?
That's an old committee.
That's an old committee.
It's the expediting of the business development at the, for, cycle of business development at the old hospital site.
But what did they just come up with?
So we don't have anyone doing anything with that committee?
You know what I mean, right?
No.
No, because there's nothing to be expedited. There's no plans in front of anyone.
Okay.
It was an expediting of a permitting process, I believe.
Okay. So is it something we don't need anymore? I'm only asking because Lil is asking us.
You only need it if, in fact, someone had some plans that, if you will. Derek is the owner, if they came forward with plans and we wanted to expedite them through the system, perhaps that committee would.
We could.
Would be doing it.
We could appoint some people.
But there's no reason to do it unless someone wants to do something with the hospital site.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
The committee is appointed. They just don't meet unless there's a need to meet.
Okay. So can?
But we don't have a selectman designee on that committee.
Okay.
So everything that's vacant in that column, we need a body.
Okay. Does it have to be this evening?
It doesn't have to be this evening, but it should be soon.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'll work with you on that and we'll get it on, all these on the next and give us all a little bit of time to think about if we want, whatever. So DEP committing the Masquet River flow and analysis.
I don't even know if they're.
I've never even heard of that.
Neither did I. That was part of the dam committee, if you will, at one point in time.
It was a sister committee. But I don't think they even meet anymore.
Okay. Well, these are kind of the things that I want, I would like to clear up. So, okay. School department liaison. That's a thing?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not a committee though.
It's not a committee, it's just a person.
Yes.
Okay, so I am Highway Barn Gasoline Cleanup. I am Park Department Liaison. John is the staff meeting liaison. So I didn't know we had a Middleborough Rotary Committee Liaison.
It doesn't, that's gone, yeah. By the wayside.
Okay. So can we just inform, do we have to officially like?
Yeah, it would be good, it would be cleaner if you officially disbanded these committees.
Okay.
Or these contact people.
Okay. So you know what? I'm going to work with you and Maureen and we're going to put all these things together in a nice package and we're going to provide it to the other selectmen before the next meeting so that if they have questions, we can discuss that. Now, budget FY '20.
Should be '21 now.
Okay, should be '21 now. I know this is a, you know, whatever question, but don't all three selectmen work on the budget? Is there one? I'm not even going to go near that right now. And school department liaison. Yeah, we're just going to put all these together. I'll talk to the town clerk and tell her that it will be on our next agenda to give her all these names or we will determine what things we don't. I thought there was one other one. The rent board?
The rent board, I know it was myself, Mitzi, and Donna. And Donna resigned and I'm off it now. I think it's just Mitzi.
Mitzi's resigned off of it.
Mitzi's resigned off of it. So that'd be a full resign. But we hadn't met in a year and a half and now the park that we were representing actually owns itself, which is different because what started, it was owned by, was it Corey Farcus? Was that?
I forget.
Yeah, it was owned by someone and the whole process was rent control. Well, now it's voted on by the actual residents.
By their board of directors.
Yeah, so.
So can we just do some study on that? Figure it out, whether, you know, give me your opinion, give us your opinion, whether you think we need, you know, I mean, it's like, I just don't want to see all these extra things that are, and, you know, the town clerk is doing her job wanting to know who the people is that are appointed and, you know, and she has every right to know that. So we should be giving her some answers. Okay. So, is there any other business that can come for the board? I'm tired.
I'd just like to bring up one concern. I hope everybody's noticing that the pond levels are extremely high. The water tables are high, all the wetlands are all full, pretty much at this point. And I think that, I don't know if Decca's under the Assawampset Pond Complex, but I think they better start discussing a plan or the options because flood that happened in 2008, 2010, is just like where we are right now. So I think that that should be talked about.
Lorraine and I both participate in the dam management, which is the regional effort of Middleborough, Lakeville, Freetown, New Bedford, Haunted. Did I get them all? And other members, including environmental folks and we meet every quarter. I'm sure we could meet more frequently if needed, but Mike Rodericks, the senator, Senator Mike Rodericks has received some money as a grant, $100,000 grant, to sort of work, they're working right now.
Hydrology studies.
Studies. We've had the ecological people called in. Representative Oral has also received $35,000. So there's actually a lot of work going on. I agree, we need to, and that's the first thing that we usually go over at those meetings, are the actual pond levels. But I believe unless anything's changed in a couple of weeks, the boards are down right now.
So the ponds are down and if I'm, if I'm correct, because Tracy has those numbers because we do it, if Assawampsets down, it's long pond, that's not dead. I believe Assawampset's where it usually is and it's just long pond that's not either draining or whatever. Yes, it's long pond that's the bigger consideration or.
And, you know, the senator's aide, Senator James Biddle, is on top of this and communicating. And there's actually a lot of communication going on and I really am very hopeful that, you know, the concern is immediate, just to be sure, you know, we don't, because we're the ones, we don't get our water from there, but we are the ones who will flood. We have an actual problem if it floods. So absolutely, Rich, you know, that group is paying attention. And then I'm also, and Lorraine participates too, on the pond complex and there's a lot of good work, a lot of people on the same and I think there's a lot of good work going on right now. But definitely they are keeping their eye, all of us on that, on those numbers.
And I know to add to that, that Norm Oral was looking into the culvert that goes from Snake, is it Snake?
Yeah.
Because at some point, there was some issue where people thought it was draining too much and people couldn't do fishing and then they made a smaller drainage pipe up higher.
Yes.
So it didn't drain out as much. And he's looking to see if that could be part of the issue that's not allowing long pond to drain.
Yep. And I do believe, you know, between the senator and the representative and all their people, they've sat down and they've, you know, taken the input from everybody and, you know, the long-term plan is to actually address the problem, not just hope that lowering the boards is going to, you know. But there's, there's several issues going on and, you know, the primary issue is the grade. There's only a three-foot grade, I think, from one all the way down to the Masquet. So we don't even have gravity in our favor to help move the water out. So the boards are down, pretty much as low as they can go. There's just that one that keeps all the silt from. But yes, Rich, those numbers, we go over them and there's actually, you know, a hope that we can get more grant money, even from federal sources, to help actually do something. But right now we have all the scientists kind of figuring out what that's going to be.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just so residents know that the numbers are all available on the town's website on the Board of Selectmen's page. There's a decade of numbers up there.
Numbers there. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So, last thing on the agenda is executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the firefighters' union, police union, and laborers' union contracts. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board and the chair so declares, then the chair declares. So I make a motion, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So, and not return to regular session?
Yes, and not return to regular session, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Go ahead.
Aye.
Baby and I.